A little of the top CPA group. Fourteen fifty six.
You guys all have them. My first question for you, if you had any to live with my. Thank you for having me come. I'm gonna draw your attention to the very first letter of the audit report. And that letter is our opinion letter. And what that does is it tells you what we've audited. It also tells you what you're responsible for and it tells you what we're responsible for. So we audited the general fund, the proprietary funds, there's several opinion units in your financials. Management is responsible for the parapresentation of these financial statements. Basically, anything that you guys write or put into a financial statement, what my goal is, is to make sure it's reasonably stated and I go out and get the evidence to make sure and support that number or those sets of financial statements. That's my overall goal. I don't audit every single transaction because if I did, I'd still be here and we've already done this one. But I don't audit every single transaction, so that can mean that there can be things missed. The goal is to make sure they're not materially misstated and that's the overall goal. We do look at different evidence and like I said, the evidence could be that I pull transactions, it could be that I do some prior year to current year, it could be several things that I do. We regordances, sometimes we don't regordances, there's all kinds of different things that we do in performing the audit. So with that being said, if you look at the very bottom, I give you what my basis of an audit opinion is. On the general fund, the governmental activities and the TIP fund, you have a qualified opinion. A qualified opinion is not the best thing, it's not the worst thing, basically what it says is that there were some limitations and things that didn't come out exactly the way I expected them to. The general fund particularly, we didn't have transactions that, we didn't have support for the transactions that were spent for the park fund, is basically what it boiled down to. And then the TIP fund, you're all aware of it, the allocations of the revenue did not get appropriately sent from the general fund to the TIP fund. And so that's why we have qualified opinion on those three areas. The rest of the funds, the proprietary, which is the sanitation, the water, the sewer, the gas, as well as all your other funds in the general, like the cemetery and the small street fund, police, fire, those types of things, all came out with a unmodified opinion, which is really what you want. I have to say, with all that you guys have been through, I think those three are good. And you have the staff work with, so. Is there any questions on this letter? Because I just basically summarized it for you. Okay, alright. Alright. Then I want to draw your attention to statements down and two. This is a little bit, governmental statements are different than profitable statements. So I'm gonna try to go over them, but I'm not gonna read every line to you, I'm just gonna give you the synopsis real quick. But on the statement of net position, basically what we're showing you is your assets and your liabilities. Assets being long-term and short-term, cash and investments and fixed assets, as well as on the liability side, you have bonds, you have some debt, and you have some bond amortization costs and those types of things. This statement shows the governmental activities and the business type activities in two columns. This is an economic resources measurement, meaning it's an accrual basis of accounting. Some funds, when we go too later, you will not see that we have fixed assets on here and liabilities on here. We take them away for a fund purpose. We want to, we want to look at it in a current type of activity, but right now you're gonna see that those things are on here. And then you have the total column. Your governmental activities and your proprietary activities encompass your full city. So is there any questions on this first page at all? There is something new on here that you guys haven't seen before, but just to go over real quick, your, the very first area is your current assets, which is your cash and your investments and your internal balances, those types of things. Your cash, we're sitting at eighty thousand five hundred and ten, which is the total right to the right of the column, for just the cash between the governmental activities and the prior activities. In the prior year, that was about eighty-two thousand, so you didn't change a whole lot in twenty-one years in it. Investments were a hundred and fifty-three thousand under the governmental activities and a hundred and thirty-four thousand under business type activities. Investments are just CD, specific deposits, you guys don't have any other types of investments. Internal balances, this is the money that is owed between the general funds and the proprietary funds. And my suggestion for you guys is to make sure those are cleaned up. The proprietary fund shouldn't be borrowing money from the general fund without a proper approval and vice versa, you guys have to go through a protocol. But this balance has grown from sixty-seven thousand to a hundred and thirteen thousand. So that's because, if I remember right, the gas fund, there was some money spent for the gas fund, the general fund or vice versa. So that number keeps going and I'd like to see you guys get that under control. Then down at the bottom, you'll see, or in the middle, it's land and other capital assets. Land, the city has three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars worth of land and assets, five million one hundred and ninety-one thousand, that includes buildings and trucks and vehicles and those types of things. And then down at the bottom, you're gonna see deferred outflows of asset resources relating to pension. This is new to you all, you've not seen this before on your financials. And what that is, is lots of loggers. Gatsby sixty-eight is a formality that came out and said, you have to be recording how much you owe in pensions. This deferred outflow though, is a, it's a change in net position liability. What it is, is basically it's an expense of the city, but you can't recognize it all in this year, you have to wait and spread it over the time period. So there's sitting twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty that you have already spent out, but you can't show it as an expense yet. So I'm gonna go over the next page on the statement. This page two, this part is the liability section. You have accounts payable, accrued liabilities, a line of credit, and then down below you have the net pension liability. That net pension liability says that seventy-four thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars is for people that are retiring. That's not something you have to pay all right out right now, because that's an adjustment on ages and where they're going to be in retirement and all, so that's not money that would be due if you closed down, it's all based on retirement. And then at the very bottom section, where you see net investment in capital assets, non-spendables and restricted for, this section is basically saying, how is your money allowed to be used? So on the net investment in capital assets, that's your, your assets minus your liabilities of one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand, same thing with the business type activities, in per year overall total of four million, two, twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. The non-spendable, the cemetery is what that represents, two hundred and fifty-five thousand six eighty-one is not non-spendable, it's in a trust for the cemetery purposes only. And then you have restricted for lease bond requirements of two hundred and thirteen thousand one oh eight, that is actual money, CDs and whatnot sitting in there for bond. If something were to happen, that money would go right to that bond head on. And then street maintenance is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight twenty-three, that's tax dollars that's come in, that you guys have to use for the street. The rest of that is unrestricted and available for the city's use. So makes sense everybody that I go with that? The next two pages is the statement of activities. I always find it interesting that people, when they look at a statement, they see profit first, then expenses. This would do totally different, we're gonna show you expenses first and then your profit. The idea behind that is you are, you all are additionally responsible to spend the tax payer money wisely. And you're actually showing that these are your expenses and we want to show those expenses first. You're not into the city to profit, you're in the city to help use those tax dollars to benefit the citizens. So that's why we start out with expenses first. Then the second column are your charges for services, that would be your fines or police department fines and penalties, as well as the fire department collects money for the fire services. And then there's a little bit of operating grants and contributions, three dollars that came in for those types of things, to your net expenses of revenue in the very far right, net expense revenue. But I just wanted to explain to you that expenses are shown first and that's why. And then the next page gets you to where all your general revenues are coming in from your tax dollars and the franchise fees and general taxes and fire, park and motor vehicle, and your TIP, all those monies came in. And the business activities, you have insurance proceeds and stuff like that down here that are not, they're monies that are not directly related to the service, insurance. And then you have the total column, but at the very bottom, you're gonna see your, excuse me, net position, beginning, prior period adjustment, I'm gonna explain that in a minute, to a change in that position. The change in that position is like your net profit, are you profiting or losing? And in this case, the city's in the negative, a hundred and seven thousand dollars on the governmental activities and seven hundred and sixty-six, seven thousand six hundred and sixty-six in the proprietary activities. This is on an economic resources method though, so that's not, we can't look at that and say, we're in a total loss, that's not like a cash basis or a current expenditures basis, this is an accrual basis. So you'll see a prior period adjustment, you're thinking, why is there a prior period adjustment, maybe you're not thinking, but anyway, prior period adjustment usually means somewhere something went wrong, because we're having to adjust the prior year activities. This isn't, this is not that, this is because of that pension I just told you about. We have to make an adjustment for prior years of the, where we didn't handle the pension on a Gatsby sixty-eight process before, so a change in accounting method came up, came about, and that's why we have a net, this prior period adjustment. So I hope that makes sense.
Well, essentially, this is the first time we've ever looked at a budget city. So essentially, the town is bringing in money, but we are essentially technically spending more money than you're bringing in?
Yes, but let me explain how you do that, because that's a good question. You always start out with a beginning fund balance, you know, your beginning cashes from all the prior years are the income of the fund that has cash. You guys started with that. So yes, you can actually spend more in the current period, because you're using the resources of the prior year.
I see.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
And everyone needs to keep in mind that this is fourteen fifty.
Yes, yes.
Sure.
The next two statements is the statement, is the balance sheet. This presentation is governmental activities broken down by fund, but it's also no longer the economic resource method or GAAP method, but it's now a current financial resources method. Remember I told you before, you had assets, long-term assets and long-term liabilities? This financial takes a while. So we no longer have assets, the long-term assets or the long-term liabilities, we have the current assets and the current liabilities. So this is how the money, I mean, this is where you stand without those additional assets and liabilities. That's the only change between those pages. The column one of page three, page seven is the same thing, only I've taken out some of those things, the long-term liabilities and assets. That's the only difference between those two. Your cash and everything, I'll say the same, and I broke it down by fund, instead of just one column. Does that make sense? Down at the bottom, it actually reconciles the two statements. So if you look at page seven, total fund balance is nine hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and ten, and that very far column, under the little column of funds, the total governmental funds, excuse me. But down at the very bottom, you'll see nine hundred and seventy-one thousand nine seventy, which ties out with that governmental fund. We chose to, we add back the assets of one million five hundred and eighty-two thousand, we add back a current period expenditure, which is that deferred of twenty thousand six eighty-one, and we take out your long-term debt, ninety-two thousand eighty-seven, I should have brought my glasses up, sixty-seven. So page seven, if you look, you have two million four hundred and eighty-three four fifty-eight down at the bottom, which ties to the very first column on page six, at the very bottom, two million four hundred and eighty-three four fifty-eight. That's showing your reconciliation of how I get to one statement to the other. Page eight, page eight, remember I told you, we always want to start with expenditures first, well, until we get to the general fund and we get to the governmental funds, the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund dollars, now we start with the revenues first and then the expenditures. So that's, that's a different presentation. And in this, there's some differences, because like I told you, we don't recognize assets in the one fund, well, we don't recognize depreciation in one fund, but we recognize spending of assets in this fund. So this is a different method. So your assets are always an expense in here, but if you guys bought something, as you did, you bought several things last year, you spent a hundred and twenty-two thousand four seventy-three in assets in the two thousand fifteen year, that's gonna be reflected as an expenditure in here instead of as an asset. Okay? Is there any questions so far? I'm just kind of glazing over the top of this, but I have a question.
Yeah. How long have you had that report anyway?
How long have I had this report?
How long has this report?
Um, what do you mean? And as far as, when the report was finished?
Well, how, I mean, obviously, these council quitters, they more likely have a report. I mean, how long has it been?
Since the last meeting.
Fourteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I asked, I asked Danny Bush, he's running for South Ward, if he'd seen any of these figures. It seems to me that, you know, you can understand this, if you covet it, have an advantage, because you're going ahead and read this report, which they've already had.
Or it's presented to the council first, then it will be available to the public.
Why isn't it available, is this public record?
It will be out as soon as it is presented to the council, this is the first that it's been out in public. They got it last Friday, okay? Thank you.
So in short?
Thank you.
Pages ten and eleven, this is your statement of net position on just.
Right, that's how a criminal does things.
There is a difference between.
He knows, he knows what's already in it. And whatever the people don't, whoever's running don't, don't know what's in it. He uses that and these criminals use it to an advantage here. They'll probably vote on it.
That's reflected here on page ten, except I now add it to sanitation, gas, waterworks and sewer, but it's exactly the same fund. I mean, the proprietary fund does not change its basis of accounting, it's always on an economic resources. So, so I won't go over, like I said, I won't go over the number again, but that's what pages ten, eleven are for. Pages twelve and thirteen are your statement of activity. Statement of revenues, expenses and changes in fund deposition, just on those funds again, sanitation, gas, waterworks and sewer. Proprietary funds actually do charge a service to your citizens, whereas general funds do not, and so they have to be separated. On page thirteen is a cash flow, just on proprietary funds, and it basically states, where's the money going? How did it flow through? We charged customers a certain amount of money, we paid our suppliers a certain amount of money, then we have changes due to other funds, that's when you gotta borrow money from different funds or whatever, to get down to your ending balances of the year. That is your financial statements in that shell. There are some recommendations I do have on your financials, and that's your capitalization policy. You guys capitalize assets that are a thousand dollars on one. So that's twelve hundred dollars, you're gonna capitalize it, even though it might last for a year, if you're gonna capitalize it over five. It doesn't really make sense. My recommendation to you is, is that you move up that capitalization policy to a higher level, especially on city side, that you're not, it's expensive things, a little higher instead of trying to track every single asset. Does that make sense?
I would give you some of your recommendation on what you should be.
I would advise you to call other city governments, decide who are and see what theirs are. I'm not management, so I can't advise, but I can tell you there's others that have changed theirs and it's been a little bit unproductive for them. And instead of reading me to all the note disclosures, which I'm not gonna do, I do want our manager, Mayor, you have me go over this letter that I gave you, I don't manage all of it. Okay. I can go over that letter, instead of going through, there's some things I wrote in this letter that core like directly with this audit, but if there's other questions in this audit, like, no questions from you guys, so, you know, I'm hoping it makes sense.
I think it is best for my dollars. I understood those.
No, it is a hard, city's are harder than, you know.
There is one thing.
Sure.
Page twenty, this would have been, this would be your two thousand fifteen, it does state that what we've been saying all along, as far as funds that have been borrowed from and to, and it is quite less.
And this is after your day, you have this portion of rectifying things, as far as I know, if not, maybe.
We haven't gotten any better with it.
Okay.
No.
I think it stopped, I think the.
It stopped.
Yes, which is great.
And some of the issues as far as sanitation and all that stuff, they reconciled herself, basically from that point to this, because we put in sanitation.
Okay.
As far as the due to's and due fronds, you know, this has been doring my side all along, since the first time I saw it. Though it comes back, I mean, you can look down through here, it's what I've been preaching about all along.
Poor criminal, poor criminal.
Due to sanitation, due to gas, in a way it was just, whatever had money in it, that's what we took from.
Right, right.
The same thing as Richard Oesler, the whines about.
Yeah.
But there is money in here that has not been restricted, you guys can ask, you can as a council decide to forbid and make it a transfer, which will clean up some of that. We just, we know that, there's nothing that says the general fund cannot help the proprietary funds, but there's no, that is allowed. What it can't do is it can't use restricted money to help the proprietary funds.
What is shameful about all this is, you know, and we're on the track to right all these wrongs, where most of this stemmed from was trying to get gas bills.
Right.
And sanitation fund that was losing twenty thousand dollars a year.
Right, right.
So we were borrowed from everything to try to overcome that.
Well, in all honesty, your proprietary fund types are, are struggling.
Yeah.
And they're not, you're already struggling making good debt payments, but you're not struggling. I hate that, because I know, I have students behind me, don't shoot them.
It's no shooting.
Yeah, but it's struggling and unfortunately, you guys have mandates that are coming down as well, that are gonna say, you have to change those. Which causes increases and, and so.
Yep.
I'll go over this letter, I gave everybody a letter, I'll let you have it.
Is it this one?
Yes. As you know, right now, two thousand seventeen, and I'm just now going over, over a two thousand fifteen audit, that's a long time. And it usually doesn't happen, but the city of Randy has gone through tremendous changes. You guys have done some cleaning, basically. And as a result, years and years past, there were several entries done for the city of Randy, to clean up the accounting, to clean up the books, and a lot of time spent in, in those prior year audits, and you guys took it upon yourselves to say, okay, it's time to clean up. So that's when you ended up hiring Taylor and Green. So I'm not, the very first part of this letter is just again telling you what I've audited. The next part tells you significant audit findings, and I'm just gonna go right to the difficulties encountered in performing audit, I'm not gonna read to you this letter, but just to go over it. The decision to change and go to new employees, you know, and went to Taylor and Green as their accountants, all that, tremendous work to be done, but it did make some difficulties, time constraints and all that. Doctors were hired fine because that new staff, you know, Taylor and Green were trying to do two thousand sixteen and, and, you know, one of two thousand fifteen audited, but you can't audit numbers that are moving, so there's been all kinds of difficulties in performing this audit, that I really believe in the future are not gonna be as, as difficult in the near future. But saying that, I just now finished two thousand fifteen audit, so sixteen and seventeen's coming up in June, end of June, so hopefully sixteen will get in time before we look at June. But one and two basically talks about that, and then item three, I talk about, you know, we had the work done by December fifth. There are some changes with an accountant that, that Taylor and Green had to make, which were a little bit dispermed off, about November six to eight, so we didn't get this completed until February, and get it to you guys, just for example. So anyway, that just, is just a difficult audit. We also give you corrections, there were some financials, some journal entries that we gave you that says here, to get your financials in reasonable order, here's the, here's the journal entries and how to conclude. So one of the things with management, honestly, your staff has been very good to work with, especially, I'm sure at times they wanted to pull their hair out, because of all the things I was asking them, and trying to learn their job and trying to keep going straight, but they did great. And then other audit findings or issues, and that's where I need to go a little more in detail. I, I pointed this out, or I talked to, let me just explain, the city clerk is authorized to transfer from the prior prior year funds to TIP fund and out of equal to thirty percent of checking account balances of each checking account in the proprietary funds, the first of June of each year, to the general fund. What I want to point out to this is that I believe this is not a true use of money, to base it on the thirty percent on each checking account balance, which you brought. And the reason I say that is because, I pointed this out to Mayor earlier when I was talking to him, let's say that those checking accounts have a hundred thousand dollars on them, but you have ninety thousand dollars worth of checks sitting here waiting to be, or bill is waiting to be issued. Mayor, anybody else can say, hmm, let's wait till July first. Hundred thousand, thirty percent of a hundred thousand comes to the general fund. It sets itself up for fraud, not saying that the current council is, that you're setting this up for fraud in the future, and so I wanted you to be aware. Though that column needs to, you can look at it, in order to change, a reasonable rent change charged for this, for those proprietary funds, something maybe, that you can spend, bring over, that you can count on, and that's easier to budget anyway.
Well, that's a good point. We talked, we talked about this last summer, about how that was so unpredictable.
Right.
And set up a predictable number, so you could budget that number.
Right, exactly. And I mean, there's nothing wrong with you charging your rent, but you don't want it to be on something that's volatile, and I mean, likewise, I can say, what if the checking account is at ten thousand dollars, well, then you guys aren't really pulling them up and you're not being able to afford them. It really should be charged, to these proprietary funds should pay rent, and there's nothing wrong with that, but it would be a consistent number, and not something so volatile and easy to maybe like.
Yeah. And something that we do, that ordinance needs to be changed, I don't know if it's been an actual.
You don't, I think so, so, yeah.
It needs to be changed.
During my audit, there was some.
I don't have to.
During my audit, there were some ordinances for usage rates that were missing. We need to make sure we're keeping track of those ordinances, because somebody wants to come in and say, well, let me see the ordinance that gives you the usage rate, we want to have those intact, and I'm sure that's partly because you know, on pension and things like that. The other thing is making sure those ordinances are in the code book, and so making sure everything's been updated. The city had a committee in charge of expenditures as it related to the park department, in auditing transactions of expenditures, we noted that documentation cannot be found as support of expenditures, we recommend that all financial data be kept within the city of Randy, that just common sense. According to the city card from prior years, the city is supposed to move ten percent of the one cent sales tax, one cent sales tax to the sales tax account, as well as transfer the money into the Randy Cemetery checking account. In two thousand fifteen, we noted that this transfer was not done, and after, after the first seven months of fiscal two thousand fifteen, after inquiry and research of the ordinances and code book, we found no evidence to support this transfer. We recommend the city do, do a thorough search of the ordinance, to see if that transfer was in fact approved, and update the ordinances and code book to reflect the authorization or stop, stop the transfer. We noted that money deposited in the general fund from revenue for the TIP fund was not being consistently transferred. In addition, there's no documentation to figure out how the transfer should be determined. We recommend the city find out how the money is to be allocated and catch up the transfers from the fiscal year and two thousand fifteen to present. The city budget expenditures for each department and the general fund. The city budget expenditures for each department and the general fund. However, we noted purchases that should have been coded to the fire department and police department were not adequately coded, and therefore gives the appearance that the fire department and police department are under budget, while the general fund is over budget. This is an internal control problem that needs to be corrected, so that each department head is aware of how much is spent to stay in line with the budget. I don't know if you're aware, that was going on, but it'd be very problematic.
Yes, it was, it was.
Okay.
A lot of these issues have already been corrected.
And I was gonna ask if there's any way you guys can.
Yeah.
Address those for us in the future, kind of just so that we know, we can address them, because that's one of the things we have to follow up with, is, what have you addressed that we haven't?
Well, it's still, the general obviously always gets beat up, because when it comes out, but up until a year or so ago, it was just.
All, yeah.
Yeah, you could see right through it, and it was from, things like that.
Right. The fiscal year in the June two thousand fifteen, there was notice, the city is not allocated the wrong months to correct departments, just like I'm six of them, so it's done basically, they're out of the action. Number eight is for several years, there have been funds that owe other funds for money that were spent on, of that fund's behalf. We recommend the city do not do two new fund counts and have a policy in place that determines when it is acceptable to borrow money from another fund, and if all the persons have mentioned that have an intention to have that money pay back. If there's no such intention, the city should use the transfer accounts. And then number nine is we noted the falling debt covenant is not met. The city will during any fiscal year have net revenues available to make rent. The city will during any fiscal year have net revenues available to make rent payments in the amount not less than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the amount required to be paid in such fiscal years, rent payments under the COP. If the revenues were less than a hundred and twenty-five percent, then the city is to hire consultants to do a weight study. You guys didn't meet that covenant. The city is to submit a statement of the number of customers served by the gas system at the end of the fiscal year. Didn't do that. The city is to submit a statement showing the amount and character of insurance carried by the city on property constituted in the gas system, showing names of insurers, expiration dates and policies and premiums to the bondholder. You know, you all didn't do that. And then the waterworks, sewers, waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bond covenant. The city is to be deposited in two thousand three hundred into the depreciation or replacement account. I think you might be doing that now.
Yeah, I'll be, I believe, but then it's all...
That's great, okay. And then the city has capitalization policy, which is a thousand dollars for any item purchased. The whole last city won't go than one here. I just feel like it's too low. I would raise it. It makes it a lot easier for them to have to track every single asset. And then lastly, as noted in the prior audits regarding separation of duties and cross-training, the court clerk receives all monies from collections of fines, post-transactions and reconciles the court bank accounts. The city of Randy has adequate personnel to facilitate separation of those duties to protect the assets and personnel within those funds. Any questions concerning comments?
Yes.
Well, in short, funds can be taken from one account and put into another account, like under, say, Richard Oesler with the approval of two city council quitters in two thousand fourteen, and with this mayor of sales in December two thousand fifteen. So essentially, you know, money can be taken from one account to the other account all the time, even if it's something about transferring or something like that.
Can I? I don't know what count they are. Like, we've had this talk a few times, Mark.
We've had this count.
If it's a proprietary account, yes. If it's a tax account, no. It's the same answer that I've been giving you for two years.
I know. You know, you keep on whining that Richard Oesler did it...
Oesler's, he's for a pronunciation of his name, and I wanted it to be actually decided.
Well, essentially, these transfers, these transfers can take place.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good job. This will be my other public prayer.